The regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, August 28th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge. The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take the roll. Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Eke?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard is absent. Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perspacher?
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, we have a quorum, so we will continue. At this time, we're going to have the introduction of a code enforcement officer, Marcus Vogel.
Good evening, everyone. It's my privilege tonight to introduce to you a new employee, new code enforcement officer, Marcus Vogel. He's a new employee, but he's not such a new employee because he's also one of our paid-on-call firefighters that is approaching his first year with us, and we're glad and welcome him aboard. And he's got a week or so in, and he's doing pretty well. And I like his attention to detail, and we're hoping for good things from him.
Excellent.
This is Marcus.
Hi. I just appreciate the opportunity and look forward to working for the city.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, we are going to continue. We have a presentation of the city's trap, neuter, and release program.
What's your chamber password? It's not here, no.
I love it.
I love this. It's great. I forget mine all the time.
Hey, there we go. We'll get her.
Swap on the screen.
Well, I'd like to thank you again for inviting me here to bring you up to speed on our trap, neuter, and release program. We also refer to this as our Community Cat Program, where we do the trapping, the spay-neutering, and then return or release program. This is something that we began looking into back in 2018. We started getting several complaints in different areas of the city about large numbers of feral cats that were running large, running around. So we began to look into this and look at what we would need to do to, what tools do we need to do this? That's where we changed some of our city ordinances regarding animals and where we did start to do a trap and neuter program. Our first program was in '21, and we've been doing it for, this is our third year now. But a trap, neutering program is a safe and humane way designed to protect the animals, to kind of curb their behavior and to also limit the population of them as best we can, as safe as we can for the neighborhood, but also for the pet, for the animal. So it is quite a process to do this. We normally start probably around the end of May or early June, depending on the temperature, when it gets warm enough. And then we're usually done by the end of October. Sometimes we're still got things going on a little bit in November, but it all depends on the weather, and it all depends on the workload of the code officer. You know, it's not a, it's not a 40-hour-a-week deal where they're out working on setting traps and taking care of the cats, but it is quite a time commitment and process to go through. You just don't put the traps out and then have to take care of the animals. And I'm going to kind of walk you through that. We follow kind of an eight-step program, and I use this illustration here. This is through the Humane Society of the United States. It's also endorsed by ICMA, and it's kind of the program that we're following and gives us a starting point for how to run our program and how to answer some of our questions that we're, that we run into when we have difficulties, or geez, how do we solve this problem? It's a good resource for us. But we've got basically an eight-step process that we're following. A complaint comes in, or we identify a problem area, and we want to get into that community, find out exactly what's going on. We're going to do some knock and talks to the neighborhood so that we find out if they know about this, what's been going on, what have you been doing to help us to solve the problem. And we also want to let everybody in the neighborhood know. We hang door tags, we hang flyers, let them know this is going to begin. We give phone numbers out, we get names and phone numbers so that we can start to kind of communicate with one another, to let them know what's going on. About a couple weeks before we're going to start the trapping, we want to set up some feeding stations and some feeding patterns. Part of the reason we talk to the neighbors is also to let them know that during this time, we don't want you to do any feeding if you are, because we want them to come to our feeding stations to get comfortable, to build the pattern. You know, we try to come at a certain time every day to put the feed out and so that they get used to coming to this area. We also need to secure a holding area that's safe to hold them before we take them to the veterinarians. You know, we, we have to get them de-fleed before we take them into their animal hospital, you know, because they don't want to get infected and have to decontaminate their whole center. So we find an area that we can, we can do that. It's climate-controlled as best as possible. Some places it's dark, it's cool, it doesn't get a lot of pressure, it doesn't get a lot of noise or disturbance. And we feed them, we water them very regularly, and we give them medicine so that within the next 24 hours, they can go right to the vet, and they don't have those problems with the fleas. We do have to schedule, set up a schedule with, to have the spay-neuter done with the veterinarians. We try to set this on a process so that we know this day of the week, they're going to set aside some time for us. And in the morning, we're going to bring X numbers of animals to them. We communicate, like they tell us how many they can handle this week. So that's, it kind of fluctuates, but it ranges from four to six a week when we get in to start doing it. And it's also transporting them to and from the different places. We've been very good to partner, we've done very well to partner with some of our local veterinarians that have done far more than what we have asked them. They, we, we take the cat to them, they look it over, they give it shots, any type of medical shot it needs, even vitamins, if it looks like it needs the vitamins. And it does get an ear nipped, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. It gets a microchip implanted, and then it stays right at the animal hospital for up to three days. Before they come back, the veterinarian decides when they're ready to go back on their own. And then we have to continue to feed them because they've had surgery, so they're not going to be able to possibly take care of themselves. So we continue those feeding cycles for another couple weeks, and then we start to get away from those. We just don't stop cold turkey, but we do start to fall back a little bit on the feeding. So it's time to, to set our traps. We set our traps out. We've got specialized traps that are designed for catching cats. They got special feeding dishes, covers for the bottom of the cages, covers for the top of the cages. Once they're trapped, we take them out of those cages as quickly as we can and get them in a holding cage that's a little safer, a little smaller, they, something that they're comfortable with, and that's what they stay in until they go to the vet. And they stay in those while they're at the vet. They get spayed and neutered. The vet takes care of them for that, of course, and then they let us know when it's return day when we get them. We kick them free back to the area where we got them most of the time. And then we look about long-term care and feeding them for that two-week period to see how they're doing. And that's basically what our main process is. As you see here by the picture, we do do an ear nip to indicate that the cat has been spayed or neutered. A lot of times, they'll get caught a second or third time. So it just helps us to identify them, that they have been spayed or neutered. So if you see them, and you, you probably know where you have a few of these feral cats in the city, you'll spot them, you'll see that when they get the ear nipped, that they have been fixed, spayed or neutered, so that they cannot multiply. Our staff goes through a certification. They do this, this TNR workshop through the Neighborhood Cats, and this is an eight-hour program, and they get certified in the TNR and get a cert when they're done. There's also one through the Humane Society of the United States that's a 40-hour program, and we do like to get those done too, but that takes a little longer to get done. But they're certified programs and so that we're following a model that's out there. We started in '21, so we've had three years doing this, and it's something that we don't do every day, every week. It all depends on the flow of code enforcement and what's hot and what's not. But we've gotten 135 cats, trap-neutered and released. One thing that we are very proud of is that over 30% of those have been rehomed. Our veterinarian partners with a couple of other county rescuers that are ways out, and some of them are down by land scene in different areas, and we get them, if they're young enough, that they can be rehomed, especially if they're a young kitten. Sometimes, sometimes we even have to have them fostered to get old enough so that we can spay them and then try to rehome them. But that's kind of neat that 30% of them have actually went to a home, went to a better place to live, so that's good. We've only had to have one euthanized, and that was after a three-day stay at the vet hospital, where the, you know, it was her recommendation. She did a lot, spent three days trying to amend the cat, and it just couldn't happen. So she did euthanize one. There are a lot of cats in the city. We have a lot of colonies, and I like to refer to this as a community cat program because it's going to take a community of effort. It's nothing that one entity, one group, one city, one county is going to be able to take care of. The TNR is backed by a lot of evidence, but to really be effective, it says you need to get 75% to 80% of the feral cats spayed or neutered. Wow, that's a lot of animals, but we have a lot of animals. But the neat thing is, and we have some of those folks here tonight, that have organizations and groups of people that are dedicated to helping this cause, and they do a lot of great things. I appreciate their efforts. That's the beginning. It's far from the end, though. But do you have any questions? Yes?
What type of metrics for evaluating success, like census data and that sort of thing, are built into the plan?
Well, that would be a pretty in-depth answer for that. I could, could get into that, but I think we'd end up doing, we'd get into the weeds on it, and I don't, I want to make sure if I put a number out there, I wanted it accurate for you.
Sure.
We ask ourselves that question, but I, I look at it like this. If, if I can take a small area and a couple of the organizations can do the same this year and then next year, and I know of about four or five private citizens that do this on their own, too. And so the more we can get organized or not organized, is going to, is going to really be what makes us effective.
So I guess a follow-up would be, and maybe this would be appropriate for one of the organizations that work together, but then what would, like, what would success look like, I mean, in terms of goals? Like, obviously, there is a goal, and it doesn't have to necessarily be, like, numeric, but it feels like, you know, a project such as this should have like a, so that when we present it to the community, it's like a mission statement. Now, obviously, it could be as simple as less cats, but it feels like it needs to be a little bit more than that so that people can get behind it. Does that make sense?
It does, but you're probably looking at north of 2,000 animals for us to really say we have an opportunity to be successful. And I do think that's achievable. That sounds like a big number, but when you put all our numbers together, you look at a five-year period, you know, we may be close to that in a five-year period.
So that, that's exactly the kind of thing I'm talking about. That's, and if these numbers are estimates, I'm certainly, but I think if people here are, we need, in order to achieve some level of success, we need 2,000 animals spayed or neutered, and we hope to achieve that in a five-year period. That way, people know, like, if, five years from now, if we're dealing, if we're still having the same amount of issues, we can be like, well, did this plan work? You know what I mean? An evaluation.
As long as we're clear, I don't believe the city can, can take care of 2,000 animals in a five-year.
No, 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 no. I meant cooperatively speaking. Yeah, of course.
A community program together, I think, could do that.
And I, and I think that some people are like numbers people, and, and including that in there really does draw in the community to say, hey, this is what we need to do so everyone counts, and that sort of thing might be helpful.
All right.
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of numbers, doesn't it make sense to just focus on one gender of cat? Or would that, if you got 2,000 of male and female cats, can you just focus on only female? Maybe you do, I don't know. I'm just asking.
Well, the short answer to that is the spay and the neutering changes both sexes' behaviors. A lot of that tomcat activity at night tends to diminish once they're, once they are, once they have been neutered. And a female can have up to five litters, so, you know, a year. So that's a lot of animals, so that's, that's a young, healthy one, too, so.
That's a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thanks for talking about a goal, a possible goal, and, you know, I know that there are a lot of cats here, and I know people who also house them or feed them. The question then is, you know, has to do with funding. Even if you project a two-year plan or three- or four- or five-year plan, there has to be funding somehow. So who funds this particular project? And then, you know, if you were to say you've got a strategic plan for three to five years, are there sources, resources outside the city that you can look at for funding such projects?
There have been organizations that have made different requests to some of the funding. We haven't necessarily done that. We have been fortunate enough to have citizens stop the code officers and give them $200, $300 at a time.
Can we collaborate with these organizations and apply for a grant that will sustain, I'm thinking sustainability here?
Then maybe we applied for a 2% grant one time for one.
Okay.
There, there are some options that are out there, but there's also a lot of the organizations that we partner with are big allies on that and, and do that. So I would also not want to take any of their funding away.
Absolutely.
But I see, you know, because...
I understand. I have a minor follow-up. So what do you attribute this cat infestation to? How come we have, I mean, you know, maybe you blame students or, or, I don't know, you know, because students sometimes leave their pets behind, but what is causing this?
Reproduction.
I know that.
We could draw a lot of conclusions from that.
Apart from that, what else?
We could draw a lot of conclusions from that, that I don't know if they would be accurate or not. There are a lot of pets that are abandoned, cat and dogs that are abandoned, that aren't cared for properly, and...
Okay. So people from other areas are not releasing their cats in our neighborhood or in the city? You know, just like they released raccoons, you know, from, you know, my raccoons have been released somewhere, and somebody's raccoons have been released near us. So I'm just asking.
We also have, have more, I believe, due to restaurants, dumpsters, those sorts of things. There's, so many cats are going to live in a square block or a square mile area, and it's based on the food, no different than it would be a wild animal out in the woods. If there's enough food to support 10, 10 will live there. If there's not, they're going to keep moving. And if there's enough food to supply 20, 20's going to move in there.
Are there locations that have more than other areas?
Pardon?
Are there areas where you have more than in other areas, you know, I mean, in terms of geography or location?
That's hard to say because you're going to see most of them at night until you start seeing the kittens or the young ones that will come around. I think we've always had, and most towns do have, a certain level of feral cat activity. It, it's gone on, you know, as long as the cat's been around, but...
Okay.
Chief, to your point a second ago, I know coyotes sometimes feed on a cat, unfortunately. Do you foresee that to be an issue going forward, as, I mean, would we have coyotes coming to the city?
We do have coyotes once in a while. We have foxes that get spotted in the area that also attack neighborhood cats. We've had several calls on things like that in the outskirts of the city, but...
I didn't know if it was an issue or, or it could be an issue going forward.
Yeah, I suppose it could be.
Thank you.
You know, I, the, the job of the fire department doesn't seem to be collecting cats. So I, I, I work for a nonprofit, and people often try to replicate what we do. And I tell people all the time, because they ask me, how do I do this? And I say, the best way for you to do it is to support us that are doing it really well. And so I just wonder how, is it more beneficial for us as a city to say, let's dump as much resources into the organizations that are doing it really, really well, and, and put, put those resources into those organizations where they're already, already, where they're struggling to have resources to do that, instead of using the, the fire department or the code enforcement officers to take care of that, funding the organizations that are passionate about cats and, and, and taking care of this problem? Because it seems to me the passion probably of the code enforcement officer isn't spaying, neutering cats, but we could say as a city, let's fund the people that are doing it really, really well and support that effort as much as we can.
Those are definitely some pretty good talking points that maybe we could revisit at a later date at a work session or, and with some specific direction, I'm sure we could gather more information for you. But you're right, this is, this is a difficult thing to do. We were very fortunate with our last code officer. She was very passionate about the animals, and she works alongside them on her own, and she did a very good job of it, but it was very time-consuming.
And I'm not saying that the fire department is a care about the cats. I'm not saying that at all.
I would probably argue the other way. You probably have two of the more stronger cat fans in the room right now, so.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you.
I, real quick, sorry. So what have you done in terms of sharing with the public more about this program and the, and the community's responsibility, and what can we as city commissioners also do to help the community know about this issue? Like, do we have, I mean, would your recommendation maybe to be to share some of these, like, social media groups that are doing it really well? Or, like, as a city commissioner, like, because I think that this is really the first year that a lot of people have been aware of TNR, even though it's been going on for a couple years. It was kind of like in some trial periods before, and now we're, and, and of course, another reason is a little bit of COVID, and not to mention the fact that all communities are having a bit of this problem. So I just want to know what is, we can do as commissioners and, or maybe we can, you know, discuss this in a work session, what we can do to help, because if it is a community project, the community needs to know about it so they can feel some ownership.
Yeah, was it all good, good talking points? And I think that we should look into that more if that's the direction that you want to go. We do, and we have given press releases and put updates out on our social media sites on what we're doing. Sometimes it's, it's not always a popular thing, so we have to be careful about how strongly we endorse different things. We have to be very careful how we do that, so.
But we can share our goal.
Correct. And, and I'll be, Susan would go to a lot of the meetings of those organizations. I've met with them and continue to meet with them on a pretty regular basis and support them and what they do, and, you know, kind of offer to help to work together on different ways, you know, like, you know, they, they have a rough time getting volunteers to come in and help them to do things, you know? Volunteers, but we've just got to keep working on it. So it's been a three-year start, and we had a big pause with COVID, getting us started, and we went most of 22, or a large portion of 22, with one code officer. And I have two, one, six months, and one's really new, so it's going to take us some time to get back into that, to get effective again.
Any other questions or comments?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. We appreciate it. And in the words of the late Bob Barker, spay and neuter your pets. All right, I'm going to ask if there's any additions or deletions to the agenda. All right, seeing none, is there a motion to support, to move forward with the agenda as presented?
I move to move forward with the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, we'll move forward with the agenda. At this time, we have public input on agenda items. If you're here from the public and you'd like to speak, you can step forward to the podium. You will be asked your, for your... to speak, you can step forward to the podium. You will be asked for your name and address and be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be let into the meeting. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience here that wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Kristen Malone. I live at 120 South Arnold Street in Mount Pleasant. I just came to speak in support of the TNR program and Chief Lobzinger. I think it's a very good program. Some of you know me from when I was on the city commission. Twenty, I didn't have a pet up until the pandemic, and then I got a foster cat from Karma Cat Cafe because I was just test driving the cat out. But very quickly, I became full-blown cat lady, fully leaning into it. I'm a librarian, so I guess it was inevitable. But I really am pretty passionate about, I love cats, but I also realize how big of a problem we have in the city. And I guess I just wanted to voice my support for the program and ask the commission, if you do do a work session about it, as far as really trying to support either the city's TNR program or figuring out some way to support the organizations, Karma Cat Cafe being a big one, as well as the Central Cat Coalition, both nonprofit organizations that do great work. So if you can figure out some kind of way to support them, support the TNR program for the city, that would be great. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. So I was here a few weeks, I'm sorry, my name is Amanda Break. I work at the Mount Pleasant Housing Commission located at 1 West Mosher. The last time I was here, I spoke very briefly about how happy we were that the commissioners were considering a pilot program for new additional affordable housing. I feel like we're very fortunate in this community to have commissioners that are concerned with the well-being of the entirety of our community. And in watching the Zoom conversation where the pilot was voted down at a 4 percentile, I appreciate that you are still continuing that conversation with negotiations. What I wanted to present to you is a little bit of what the economic advancements or advantages, rather, are to creating affordable housing in our community because I know that that felt kind of like the negative aspect to this entire build. So I'd like to present words from other communities and other leaders that have encouraged and built affordable housing in their communities based on pilot program and Lytec, if I may. Before I came for this presentation, I did ask our executive director of the Housing Commission how she felt about them having less other percentage for their pilot. And her honest response was, I am happy to get affordable housing in this community, and with the prices for building materials being astronomically high at this time in comparison to when we established, we feel like this is a good move and we'd like to encourage it. So I just wanted to pass that word on to you as well. A little bit about myself. So I am on the executive team for the Mount Pleasant Transitions Committee, which involves about 35 individuals from nonprofits, local government officials, and concerned citizens. I am part of the Regency Housing Partnership. I'm the chairperson for the education and communications for our state, or rather, for our region. I'm a board member on the Summit Clubhouse, and I'm a project manager and board chair for the Maslow's Mount Pleasant Tiny Homes Village. Isabella County is number one ranked in poverty in the state of Michigan. Isabella County is at 26% poverty, whereas Mount Pleasant poverty rate is 34.1%, which is about 16,756 individuals in poverty. Our housing commission waitlist consists of 104 family elderly and disabled folks on the waitlist and 342 families on the voucher programming waitlist. 10% of my vouchers are coordination from other counties as we don't currently have the financial availability to assist our locals. So I house folks from outside of our region because that's where they're able to get funding. As far as the economic burden on accepting this lower pilot, I went and looked up a few articles that made me happy, so I thought that I would share them with you. The first one is called Affordable Housing and the Key Element of Economic Development. And she starts with, a few months ago, I was talking to a fellow economic developer professional who asked me why I cared about affordable housing, because in his words, affordable housing is an economic development. In his view, economic development is meant to help companies facilitate new job creation, enhance the community's tax base, and provide opportunities for increasing household incomes. However, when that happens, a community is so successful, its economy, economic development efforts with regards to housing decreases and the prices escalate, which quickly causes income growth but can't keep up in the availability of affordable housing. And currently, we're at a point where our economy has done so well. We do continually grow, we're bringing in new businesses, but we don't have the workers, which is why you're seeing a lot of help wanted. And that's because our workers can't afford to live here. An affordable housing increase creates ability for, I'm sorry, rather, without affordable housing in the region, lower-income employees are forced to move further and further outside of the area, searching for housing options, and it reduces the quality of life-making recruitment with longer commutes for all companies difficult. Individuals are likely to be forced to relocate because they generally live in the same area that they work. Housing strategy that encourages affordable units to a mixed market, such as the one that Inspires currently proposing, reduces pockets of concentrated poverty and has higher chances of changing the economic status for the folks that live in their community. I'll just get through some of that because I think I only have, what, a couple of minutes. There was another, affordable housing can drive the local economy. There are several points where they were talking about paychecks taxes, the creation of new businesses, improving the infrastructure and public housing. The Coalition for the homelessness estimates that are keeping a family in home saves taxpayers approximately $38,000 a year in shelter costs. And it's estimated that for every dollar spent on reducing childhood poverty, such as creating stable housing, the U.S. would save at least $7 for every dollar they spend in the well-being of our children. It's also estimated, based on another article, that for every dollar invested in affordable housing, there is $2.30 in economic activity as a boom for the community. And increasing the affordable rental houses adds between $1.2 billion and $2.4 billion annually to local economies. I have lots of more statistics because those are my favorites. So if you want more, please feel free to come and find me. I'm happy to talk about it. Affordable housing provides tax benefits that result from increased property value. How whole communities benefit from affordable housing, residents can increase their spending power. Rent is the single biggest expense for most people. And unlike luxury properties, the occupancy rates in affordable housing with economy and affordability remain steady. Living in affordable housing is more likely to allow folks to spend substantially on nutrition, food, and healthcare. And I know that you all understand the benefits of affordable housing, and I don't think that that was even something that was contradicted or questioned when it came to it. But study after study after study shows that small communities, large communities, communities in general benefit when there is affordable housing, when folks can afford to pay for their housing, and then they're able to work in that community. Those taxes go to the city, you know, or any local governance. There is a massive financial benefit in creating and encouraging affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
There is, yes.
Okay.
Can you make a comment email?
Okay, that'd be great.
This is from Ann Heidemann, 621 East Andre Avenue, and it says, hello, I am writing to voice my support for the city's TNR program and to advocate for continued and increased support for this program. Free roaming cats are a detriment to the quality of life for all residents. I hope the city will commit to providing robust support for all efforts to reduce the number of cats on the loose.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward and speak? All right, I'm going to close the public input, and we're going to move on to receipts of petitions and communications. Manager, dissent.
Proceeded petitions and communications includes the minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board from July, and the resignation of Rachel Blizzard of the Tax Increment Finance Authority, term to expire December 31, 2025.
Okay. We're going to move on to the consent items. Are there any items in the consent calendar that anyone would like to have moved into the general agenda? No? Okay, seeing none. Manager, dissent.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held August 14, 2023, consider amendments to the professional services agreement with Mead and Hunt for taxiway A rehabilitation, consider approval of a Michigan Department of Transportation resolution, and authorize execution of M.DOT contract amendment for taxiway A rehabilitation project design, consider allocation of $25,000 in funding from the city's HO-DAG funds for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Neighborhood Enhancement Program, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
I move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Consent items have been approved. We do not have a public hearing, but we do have new business to consider. The pilot proposal that we had considered last time is being brought back to us. Manager, dissent.
So Spire Development presented the proposed development as part of the city's request for proposals for affordable housing pilot projects to the city commission on July 24. City commission then debated the merits of the project at its regular meeting on August 14. City commission directed staff at that time to negotiate a higher pilot rate with the developer. This would be more based on the rate that other pilots pay within the city, as well as a rate closer to what other cities are receiving as part of their pilot deals. So staff took a look at this. We found a couple of different municipalities that had recently completed similar projects. Both Midland and Coldwater had completed projects in comparable size, roughly 50 units. Midland set a rate of 9% for their pilot, while Coldwater set a rate of 8%. Other projects the staff looked at were well prior to 2020 would not be good comparisons within the current economic climate. Staff was able to negotiate an agreement with Spire that the final gross rent payment would be 8%. This rate can be divided between the pilot, which would be the shared rate amongst all taxing jurisdictions, or a municipal services rate, which would be held by the city. Staff has also provided a memo which includes a table on the distribution of these payments under such an agreement. This includes revenue that the city would receive if the rate is set to an either all pilot rate or an all municipal services rate and everything in between. Moving forward, the city commission can either move to approve the proposed project with a pilot rate set for a certain rate and the municipal services rate set for a certain rate, or the city commission can also move to deny the pilot as well, too.
All right. Are there any questions or clarifications needed by the commission at this time? Commissioner Ake?
Actually, you have addressed my question just a little bit. It is to clarify the implications of the options, the 4% pilot or the municipal, or the rates, you know, if the municipality were to take that on. Just more detail, please.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So if you take a look within the city commission packet, and I'll utilize the chart that finance staff had provided here, on the first page, it has a pilot breakdown as well as a municipal service fee, and we just rounded these off to the nearest whole percentage. You will show then what the total to the city would be under either anywhere from a 0% pilot to an 8% pilot, and then obviously an 8% municipal services fee, all the way down to a 0% municipal services fee. We can see in the third column is the total to the city, the total revenue that the city would receive under that proposed arrangement, and then the total to the other entities, and then it gives the total breakdown of what that actual fee would be in total dollars. On the second page of that, it then shows, based on that pilot percentage, what the other entities in total would capture, and then it breaks it out between the various other taxing entities as well. So county, state school, library, R E S D, Mid-Michigan College, and then just shows the total of what that capture would be as well, too.
Manager, dissent. Could you just...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. I thought it was. Could you just give me an overview of, you know, for example, if we were to go with an 8% pilot and the other entities would receive that chunk of $27,000, like, how important is that money to the county, the state, the school, the library? I mean, is it minor? Is it a big deal? You know, help me there because I don't, I don't understand like what the R E S D's operating budget is. Or, you know, is MMCC or MMC really going to miss the $530 that they would receive if it were to be that 8% number?
Those are the details that I was asking.
Yeah. Look, I don't have an understanding of how these other things, what type of money or anything that they need to function. I have an understanding of what the city needs to function.
Yeah, I would, it would be hard for me to speak on their behalf to say how much they would be missing. When you look at an organization like the county, they have a structure and a size very similar to what the city has. So let's just say roughly $17 million general fund within that. That's roughly what you're talking with the county. I am less familiar with the schools and the rest of the organizations as to what they have in terms of the total size of their funds, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
Okay. And when it says school, is it local schools or is it...
It would be, it would be Mount Pleasant Public Schools.
Public Schools, okay.
Can I start a discussion? But just by saying, one option would be to keep some for the other entities, maybe 4% and 4% for city services. I think it is important to give, to keep some in the pilot aspect of it because the residents of these units, sure they're going to appreciate the city services and all that, but they're also going to use the library, perhaps have kids in the public schools. So I think that would be a benefit of maintaining some money in the pilot part of it.
Completely agree with you. I just needed some perspective as to what some of those numbers actually meant in terms of those other.
Yeah, and I think my question was very similar. What is, what's more important, the pilot percent or the city fee? I mean, is it, should we just decide to split it half and half, or should we say the city, and to your point, the city really would utilize resources in a smaller pool of funds than the county and all these other entities? So should the city do like 5% and then 3% to the other entities? I don't know. I mean, what's, what's your professional opinion?
Well, putting it all on him.
Right. Let's be, you know, I would look at the trade-offs of this. I think what you're talking about here, which is a more split, certainly seems more fair, obviously. From the organizational perspective, I would say, hey, I would welcome another $27,360 into the city coffers entirely. But I also understand, once again, as had been pointed out by the vice mayor, these other entities provide services and would provide services to the people who would be living in this proposed development. So I think there is some, some room there for maybe sharing the wealth a little bit.
Well, considering we are a community, not just within the city limits, but within the county, I think that sharing it as we have with other taxable is important, you know, being able to support the library, being able to support the schools, being able to support the community college, I think is very important, as well as supporting ourselves. But we also know that what is, what those properties bring in right now is much less than what we're going to get when this pilot is built.
is much less than what we're going to get when this pilot is built. So either way, we're going to, we're bringing more money in than what we are right now, and which is needed, because once we have people in those buildings, they're going to be utilizing the roads, they're going to be utilizing the, the services that we provide here in the city, but they're also going to use the library and use the schools and, you know, benefit from a lot of things.
I definitely agree with you there, Mayor. My only concern is, you know, again, that we're landlocked by a unit township, and we have no place to go.
We can only go up.
Yeah.
Well, but we don't have resources, and I think that's the challenge. You know, resources that would generate, you know, funding to sustain, you know, the, the program or these, you know, the buildings in moving forward. And so I am supportive. I'm going to ask a question. What did the city manager and staff, you know, what is their sentiment? What is their, you know, where are they in terms of their headspace related to this particular project?
Yeah, staff overall seemed, for the most part, very supportive of it. Also, our conversation, though, was on the early end, more towards the, just weighing the project as a total between affordable housing within the community, as well as what the proposal was from the developer at the time, which was 4%. Obviously, we've negotiated a higher rate with that in talking about just the now 8% rate, you know. I think that there's probably sentiment all across the board on that, whether it's, you know, with the city, as I've said, the city could certainly utilize the funds ourselves, but also, we recognize the need to share with the other service providers out there.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, if we are to build a healthy community or a healthy, you know, city, there is need to collaborate, you know, cooperate with the other entities or the other organizations or units that are, you know, in our community. And clearly, you know, anybody living in this, you know, in these, you know, in the homes or the houses would eventually use the other amenities that we're talking about, and we also have to make sure that they are whole. So it wouldn't hurt us to share with them. I suppose the percentage we're quibbling with is what the percentage has to be. I'm okay with 4/4, just down the line.
I have a question.
Yes.
Then maybe for Commissioner Chavon or whoever feels necessary to chime in. Is there any benefit in waiting for another pilot opportunity to come along? Are there any in the pipeline? You made a very convincing, yes, go ahead. I understand there's a need for it. I just don't know how a timeline plays into it.
Yeah, maybe I can just offer some, I guess, ideas regarding the pilot project. We've been looking for pilot developers. We released, we adopted a pilot policy in December, and then we released the RFP for, you know, to receive applicants. And I think, because the way the program works, you have yearly, basically deadlines every year to apply for it. It's a competitive program at the state level, so it's not that we approve a pilot program here that's going to be approved of the state. We need to have a competitive proposal to secure that at the state level. And so if we, let's say, we sit and wait for other developers to come forward, it's one, we're going to lose this year's competitive round, which will be in December, and then we may not see anyone coming forward next year, or we may, and then we may not secure the state funding at next year. So considering all the needs that we just heard about, the numbers, you know, of affordable housing units that we need, I think I would support the idea of proceeding with this project, because I also think that they offered a good balance between different income levels and different unit types. So from one bedrooms all the way to three bedrooms, which is quite rare in this world of affordable housing projects.
Well, one last question, real quick. Director Luria, do you need any special resources, or just curious for, to handle this on the fire side, or?
No.
Nothing?
Nope.
Commissioner Ake.
Okay, I'm done asking questions.
Yeah, my, my inclination is to, you know, to move forward with it, because we have discussed it extensively, and they have come back and offered something higher than, you know, they offered, you know, initially, and I think it's good faith, you know. And you're absolutely correct, because it is grant-funded, there's no, no guarantee that this will, you know, come back, or that they will come back in the future. We have all acknowledged that we need affordable housing. This is a good opportunity to give it a try, and, you know, let's just make a decision about it and then move forward. That's my position, but I will defer to the commission, too.
I had a conversation with the developer that has done many pilots, and he told me that the, the rate that he has right now is like 8 to 12% for his. He said for senior housing, it's much different. And so when he told me that, I, I thought, and I talked to manager dissents, it, it made sense that 8% just makes sense. And I think, I think that it meets a tremendous need that we have, and I think it'll be, I think it'll be helpful at 8% for everybody. At 4% seems kind of one-sided a little bit, but for, 8% seems, seems fair, and I think it's something that, that we should support.
Commissioner Bush.
Yeah, I think the, sounds like the city staff did a great job with that.
Now, would, do we have to decide on the rate tonight?
That is what the developer's looking for. That way, they can, they know what the rate would be, and they can move forward with the competitive round at the state, and so we would want to set what the total rate would be.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we support this at 4% for the pilot, 4% for the municipal service fee, a total 8% before with Spire Development.
I second.
All right, we have support and second. Are there any further questions?
I vote no. It's because of the 4 and 4, or, I'm in all favor for this pilot program. I think I've made that clear. However... I don't know what the number is. I mean, nobody here does.
Just watch.
You're just guessing.
What do you mean? What do you mean that you don't know what the number is?
Well, I'm aware that it's $17,000 to the city and $10,000 to other entities. However, it hasn't, you're putting against nothing, so...
We're just doing, we're just doing what we were asked to do.
Yeah, I, I know, but I'm just saying, there's no, like, that $10,000 means, never mind, we'll just go forward. It's frustrating, so just go ahead.
It would be, it would be nice to know for sure, but I don't think there's...
Yeah, nobody can tell you what it goes to, so it's, you're just guessing, and it's frustrating, so I'm done.
We're dealing with grants, we're dealing...
I don't, but it just, like, we'll sit here all night, so let's just go forward.
I understand your concerns with them, because you don't know how much money is going to this entity, how much is that, but that's all based in, in the percentages of the tax roll.
Sure.
And that's not something, that's a, that's a deep pool to jump into.
I agree, but it just, for me, it has to connect.
Yeah.
And it's not going to, so let's just go forward.
They can't make that decision right now, because they probably don't know exactly what it is going to be. And if you're going to apply for grants, you don't know exactly how much you're going to get.
I support the pilot program. I just don't want to move forward and, like, put a...
Commissioner Bush.
What do other municipalities with similar projects split things at?
That's what I...
Manager dissents.
Of the other two pilots that we had discussed here, and at least the Midland and Coldwater ones, those were 100% pilot rates, so it was an 8% pilot rate and a 9% pilot rate. I did talk with another municipality that was in process of negotiating one, and I believe they were ending up closer to about a 5.3 or 5.4 split. I can't remember entirely what that one was.
So we are doing 50/50, basically.
There are municipalities that split it, and there are municipalities that just do it as a whole pilot rate.
And when you say that, you mean the, the, with no municipal service fee, 8%?
In Midland and in Coldwater, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
I, I don't have a problem mending it if we want to amend it, but I just don't, I don't know how else to do it.
I think that sharing with the community is important.
I do, too. I do.
And, and I think, I think it's all, especially with the idea of, like, so 4% is going to go towards roads and fire, and, I mean, I don't know how much that's going to cost for that entity, you know what I mean?
That's not far.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I...
But we don't know, but we will never, we, we never know until we arrive at the point where those funds are needed. So, you know, you don't know next year what that would become. The reality, however, is that these particular entities are part of the community. People are going to use these resources eventually, and I think there is significance in working collaboratively with other entities in our community that help to make us whole, that actually help, that make it possible for our residents, for our people to live productive life. I'm thinking, again, I keep talking about community well-being, this is part of it. So, you know, if we are, we have said that we, you know, we want to reach across and connect with other, you know, other groups, other organizations. Mount Pleasant Public School is our public school, for goodness sake. The library belongs to us, it belongs to our people.
Well, and the reality is, the reality is, in a, I don't know what a budget is, 32 million, 46 million, whatever it is, $17,000 is a drop in the bucket, you know what I mean? So, and so 17 or 27, what difference does it make at that point? You know, I mean, it's either going to cover it, or it's not going to cover it by a lot, right? So I, I think the relationship with the county and, I, I, I mean, for me, I, because I was with you at first, I thought, well, we're here to represent the city, so let's take as much money, but I, I mean, just hearing...
No, I'm not saying the city needs as much money as possible.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying I'm here to support the city, right? The residents of our city. And so in my mind, as I'm thinking of that, but now hearing other things, to, and, and hearing Aaron even as the, the leader of the city to say, well, we probably should, you know, split it, then, then I'm okay. If that's, if that's what we should do and decide to do, I'm okay with that. But obviously, like I said, we're here to represent the city, and, and so for me, the more money the city gets from a development in the city, the better, but if it makes more sense as a community to say, let's, let's split that, then I'm okay with that.
But the school supports the city.
Sure. No, I understand that, I understand that, I understand that.
The library supports the city. So I, I, you know, I, I, I have difficulty looking at this in terms of, you know, fragmented spaces. They are all interconnected, they are symbiotic. We depend on these resources, they depend on us. If we don't support these resources, our own people, our residents, our kids who are going to these places, you know, for education, for God knows everything, will also suffer. So if the schools don't work, who wants to live in Mount Pleasant with horrible schools? Or where we don't have good relationship with the school, with the library, with other entities in the municipality? I think that, you know, having this relationship makes us better and stronger. That's, that's where I am, sorry.
I want to echo what Commissioner Ake said and kind of summarize, saying that I think that us as a commission have all said that we value the cooperation that the city has with these other organizations, and so if these numbers really don't have any logical meaning, at least maybe they could have a symbolic meaning, and 50/50 is symbolic, saying we're in this together, we're cooperative, this is something for our entire city. So if it doesn't have a logical meaning, maybe it has a symbolic meaning, and 50/50 is symbolic.
I have one final question.
Yes.
How long is the pilot bait? Sorry, I know it's been discussed, but that was a while ago, and...
Let me go ahead and grab our packet from the last meeting, because offhand, I don't want to give you the wrong information.
Give me a ballpark.
It's 20 or 30, it's 20 or 30 years.
And then what happens after that?
30 years.
30 years.
So I believe that in the very preliminary proposal, it used to be 20, but it is 30 years, and state law requires the units to be affordable for actually 45 years. So it is a very good deal in terms of providing affordable units to the community. Also, just wanted to add that in our own policy that we adopted in December, we did state a number of a policy pilot rate between 4 and 6% and a municipal service fee at around 3%. Those numbers were just illustrative, they were just brought by the consultants that worked on the draft for us, and this was based on standard numbers that they saw in their own research. So a 50/50% split is not far off from, from that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. To accept the 8% and split it 50/50 with the city and the community.
I think I seconded the motion.
Yep, we have a second, all right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
No.
You could have waited till I, yeah.
I know.
All right. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to announcements of city-related issues and new business. This is where the City Commission brings forward information that they would like the community to know, or staff would move forward with things. Does anybody have anything they'd like to speak on? You guys are all talked out. Okay, anything from the city? No, all right. We're going to move on to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to come forward to the podium, you may speak on agenda items from today or non-agenda items, things that you'd like to bring forward. You will be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature, or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone, you'll be moved into the meeting, and you'll be asked for your name and address and be given five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is none.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to close the public comment, and we're going to, I'm going to ask, do you guys need a recess?
Yes, please.
Okay, we're going to do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
It is 8:07.
I stretched the ready top, all right. I don't know why, oh, my joints seem to hurt. I don't know what's going on.
Back to cars, here we go.
Yep.
I needed to get water to drink.
We're going to move on to the discussion of electric charging stations.
Yay, let's have those.
All right, you have the floor, Michelle.
Yeah, let me go ahead and tee up Director Sponseller here. So the city has been approached by an organization offering a program to provide electric vehicle charging stations in the city limits. The charges are provided by a company who will own and maintain the chargers on city property. The customer who is utilizing the charger would then be charged a rate per kilowatt for the energy. The city is able to negotiate a percentage of this income with the owners of the charging stations. Staff is seeking city commission input on this proposed program and other options, uh, such as do, does the city commission want to have a program like this where the chargers themselves are owned and maintained by a third party? Or there's certainly other options out there, such as the city could purchase chargers for themselves and then essentially sell the energy that way as well, too. So Director Sponseller is here today to provide the details on this program that has been offered to us and answer any questions that the city commission may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Excellent, I almost don't need to go through these slides, it was so good. Yes, the program is aimed at looking to double the number of level-two car charging stations in the United States and Canada. They're aiming for forty thousand in that area. The charging station provider has been selected to supply the EV chargers for the program, it's called Flow. It has been selected as a turncase solution for installation for the chargers throughout Michigan, the Great Lakes Bay region and beyond. So here's sort of a quick little overview of it, how it works from, from, if you will, this point forward. We've engaged in some very low-level conversations. From here forward, we would be bringing you back a lease, so you could read all the, all the specifics on it. We have three locations already selected. And then we would move forward with connecting their installers with our engineering team to make sure that the electrical components and everything, I say all things electrical, meets all our standards, their standards and can be installed. In two of those locations, one being behind City Hall and one in Parking Lot Two. So for those of you who don't know where that is, that's behind Max and Emily's, Jackie Alley, as you would know it. We currently have a car charging station in there. My running joke is that's not even a generation one, it's about twelve years old, so it's like generation zero at this point in time. It is still working, but if for a full charge, that would take you fourteen hours. That's how old that unit is, but it's holding in there still. And then we would be looking to have a handful of charging stations as part of the Town Center Parking Lot Three redevelopment next year. All right. This is what they would look like, sleek, much smaller than the units currently in Parking Lot Two. You'll notice that the lower portion of the unit, the top section says Ultimum. And then below, I want to make sure that you understand that, that because this is free to us, there's a small advertising component and that's where that would go.
What would go?
At the advertising, because this is sponsored by General Motors. So for example, a local car dealership would be able to put their logo there, that's how they offset the cost.
Okay. And it's two chargers.
Right, two chargers per pedestal.
Okay, okay.
Mm-hmm. So to be clear, there's no cost to the city for the EV chargers or the installation. Over time, they would also upgrade them as technology changes. If they fall out of use for some reason or they need to be repaired, there's a number on it. You would, the folks charging their car would actually reach out and call that number, they would not call us, to be clear. They are dual-port and pedestal-mounted, offering maximum power output, which is called level two. The charger accommodates all current and next-generation EVs. So you can have different, if you think about it, Tesla is different than Ford, GM and so on. So there's different components, so different cars could use that charger. Three cents per kilowatt hour is what they are offering us to, at the city for revenue. So for example, if they would charge fifteen cents a kilowatt hour, they would pay us, the city, three cents per kilowatt hour of usage. Now, to be clear, this is not going to be a huge revenue stream for us. At maximum capacity, over the course of a year, it'd be about a thousand dollars, just to be clear. I want to make sure everyone is not thinking big dollars.
But we're not putting money into it.
Correct, we're not putting into it, we're not having staff time to maintain them, install them, all the things. So considerations, however, enforcement of the charging stations, no different than the ones currently in Parking Lot Two. Advertising, albeit small on the units with municipal property, that's something new, we haven't done before. And we'd have to consider snow removal around the bases. I would need to add that into our current contract for sidewalks around the parking lot, for example. Proposed locations, as I mentioned, the Town Center Parking Lot Three reconstruction, we'd have three new units, so that would be six vehicles that could be charged. Replace the existing unit in Parking Lot Two, Jackie Alley. And then back in the corner near the Oak Street Bridge, there's two lone parking spaces behind City Hall here, that sort of sit off to themselves, that's an excellent location for an EV charger in that particular location. So overall, five units with capacity to charge ten vehicles. And then we can also add other locations down the road. But before we go and put them in every parking lot in all different locations, let's see what the usage is, let's get some data and we can move forward at that point in time. Next steps, finalize those sites, look at the agreement, approve the agreement. And then moving forward, as I said, with engineering to make sure that they have the necessary electrical needed for those particular locations. But when it comes to Parking Lot Two and behind City Hall, they believe that they could have these installed by the time the snow flies. Now, of course, that depends on the farmer's almanac, when the snow is actually going to fall, but they believe they can have it done this year. And that is all.
Commissioner Chapman.
Lots of que.
Yeah, lots of questions. Are they rapid chargers?
No, they are not rapid chargers.
So, so nothing, nothing would have to be upgraded with our electrical systems? I mean, you would have to put a new transformer and.
That's, that's my understanding, correct.
So if they run into things, are they going to be responsible to take care of that?
They will, yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
This is just a thought, it seems like when you put chargers in city parking lots, you're mostly putting them in for city residents. Because my thought is, if I was a traveler with an electric vehicle, my first thought would be to go to a gas station to see if they had an electric charger.
Not many gas stations have EV chargers. The exception here in Mount Pleasant is Coin Oil has rapid chargers. Other than that, most people who have electric cars, they have apps on their phone that tell them where the charging stations are, are located at, tells them the cost, are they rapid or are they level two, what, things like that, so.
So it's maybe good to have it by downtown, so then they can shop downtown while their car charges.
See, that's, that's, yes, that is true, that is. Now, and for those residents who have electric vehicles, more than likely, and I'm, I don't know percentage-wise, but I would certainly think that they would have the chargers inside, I say their garage, so to speak, so. They'd come down for that.
Okay, you, you addressed part of my question because on NPR, I think about a week ago, maybe a few days ago, there was a, 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 a segment addressing the problems with chargers, you know, EV chargers. And in this case, you know, the, um, the lack of chargers and the difficulty of finding easy access to those, you know, chargers. And, um, the slowness of those chargers. And in this case, it actually had to do with Ford, you know, the Ford EV. The director was driving across the country, trying to locate, to find out where these chargers are. And he finally concluded that they were not going to do that, so they'll just have to partner with Tesla and buy Tesla's chargers, I'm not kidding. And so he and his son, fifteen-year-old son, were driving, doing a cross-country, you know, driving, trying to find this. So I'm thinking about that as you're presenting and I'm thinking about location of these. You know, you just said, you know, they have apps to find them. So it makes sense that, you know, it's easy, easily, you know, accessible over there. But I also wonder whether we have a sense of the number of, you know, who has EV vehicles, you know, in our community? Do we have any data? You just sort of said a few minutes ago that we're going to have to install these and then find out how often or how frequently, how frequently they're used, at least they use it, and then determine whether we're going to, you know, install one. I'm curious, did you look at CMU to see if there's something there? Because that's also another location with parents coming and their kids coming and all that. You know, there's that huge Anspar parking lot or near CMUs you see. I don't know whether, you know, there was any consideration of looking at CMU to see if there's a possibility of.
Yes, but.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So let me start with, I don't have statistics on the number of EV vehicles in our community. But that is also why I was looking at five of the pedestals that would charge ten vehicles. If it's successful, we can grow from there. Part of the agreement also, as, as it stands now, is if it's not used a certain percentage, they can choose to remove the units.
Okay.
So it's, it's sort of a give and take.
Yeah.
As far as other locations, yes, I gave the company a list because at CMU, I just said, here's some context at CMU, talk to them. I, I gave them a whole list, hospitals, library, Soaring Eagle Casino Resort, the water park, all, all, many different locations that potential, but that'll be up to those entities to whether they want to proceed or not.
Makes sense.
Commissioner Chapman.
And it does make more sense for them, I mean, if they're making money off of it, seems like we can make money off of it, too. So it makes more sense to have them do it and not us just do it?
Yes, the amount of, there'd be a steep learning curve, let me put it that way. And I don't think there's anyone on staff who would tell you that they have a lot of capacity to run down electrical issues and learn EV charging, the mechanics of those. They certainly don't. And I'm the person that they've called in the past about the one in Jackie Alley and I'm like, well, let me call Block Electric, is typically my response, so.
Sure.
Alec, the low, the, the low-risk or almost no-risk option, I mean, that's really the best way to, for us to see. Now, is there any, there's no contract of any kind, right?
Not, not at this point, we would, we would bring that forward to you, that would be, if you will, the next stop.
And hopefully the contract will spell out, you know, the responsibilities.
Yes.
Yeah, so if they dig in their process, damage some electrical wire or, you know, cable somewhere, it's not the city that's going to take care of that.
I think it sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, if we're not, you know, yeah.
Well done.
Good job.
Thank you.
Trying to organize our city.
So I think the consensus of the commission is to move forward.
Yes.
Get them in before the winter.
Before the snip flies, right?
Yeah.
Hopefully. Yeah, it's all up to Mother Nature, right? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're adjourned at eight twenty-six.
You go by yours.